I'm kind of hot. Are you not hot?
I was really hot.
Yeah, we were all.
I'm not now, but.
Were you jacket on?
Well, not cold, but I just was like, might as well try to look presentable at some point.
Try. Try as you may. Good evening, Wind Cam and everyone here. Welcome to the Monday, September 11th, 2023 Winchester Select Board meeting. My name is Rich Mucci. I'm the Chair of the Winchester Select Board. With me this evening are Vice Chair Anthea Brady, Members Michelle Pryor and Michael Beckencourt, and always Town Manager Beth Rudolph. We have a lot to cover tonight, so we're going to jump right into it and do an acceptance of donations.
Move that we accept with gratitude a donation of $600 from Gail and Stephen Malloy to the Recreation Department, 500 for Memorial Bench and other supplies at the Packer Ellis Tennis Courts, and 100 to the Recreation Department gift account.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move that we accept with gratitude the FY24 State 911 Department Support and Incentive Grant of $65,826 from the state of Massachusetts to the Police Department.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move that we accept with gratitude the FY24 State 911 Department Training Grant of $16,390.80 from the state of Massachusetts to the Police Department.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Well, thank you all for those donations. Next, we'll go to Beth's Town Manager's Report.
Thank you. I have two appointments this evening to start with. So first, in accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, I've made the following regular full-time appointment in the Department of Public Works. Heavy, water sewer heavy equipment operator Timothy Bigelow from Woburn, and I respectfully requested the Board vote to waive the customary 15-day appointment period.
Discussion? Is there a motion?
Move that we waive the 15-day appointment period to appoint Timothy Bigelow to the Water Sewer Heavy Equipment Operator position.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then second, please to announce a promotion in the Fire Department. So in accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, and in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Department of Personnel Administration Civil Service, and as permitted by Chapter 708 of the Acts of 1941 as amended, I've made the following promotional appointment in the Fire Department of Peter Goof from Dunstable to Captain, and I respectfully requested the Board vote to waive the normal 15-day appointment period.
Is there a second? Or, sorry, is there a motion?
Move that we waive the 15-day appointment period to appoint Peter Goof to Captain.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations to Peter and Mr. Bigelow for coming onboard. Great work.
So I just had a few other updates. First, we've done a lot of appointments over the past few months, so I just thought I'd kind of summarize. There's been a lot of new faces here in Town Hall who came onboard really in the past few weeks. So we have a new Town Planner, Taylor Herman, who joined us, a new Building Commissioner, Tom Kennedy, a new IT Department Network Administrator, Michael Wayne, who came over from the School Department, so we're very pleased to have him. Diane Full has joined us as our new Assistant Treasurer Collector, and then we have a new full-time Environmental Health Inspector in the Health Department, Cameron Bishop. So I hope everyone will join me in welcoming them to Winchester.
Absolutely.
In the packet, in my memo, I just provided a summary of the various articles that the Capital Planning Committee has recommended, funding articles at town meetings. It's quite substantial and I'm pleased to see there's several recreation-related articles on here. So I'm not going to go through all of these, but just happy to take any questions if the Board has it on any of those items. In addition, there's a draft spreadsheet that I put together with Town Council that summarizes kind of the existing and the unfunded capital projects as well as some of the upcoming capital projects that are in the out years. And then we took a, it's still in draft form, but we took a stab at indicating which of these projects are CPA eligible and which of the projects are also ARPA eligible. So I believe that the plan is to discuss this at your next meeting. So please, if you could just take a minute to review it and let me know if you have any questions or anything that you'd like to have added to it before that that meeting, that would be helpful.
Is this a newer draft or?
This is the version that came out in the packet. Yep. So this, the CPA eligible and ARPA eligible was updated last week by Town Council, and we're still going through some of these, some of the maybes that that Town Council had indicated in there. So I'm still working through some of that with with Town Council.
Yeah, I think the other piece of information that would be helpful is to show when the projects first came on as requests and any projects that we funded for design engineering or schematic design and then didn't end up funding construction, right? So maybe some of the traffic projects, things like that.
Okay. Good.
Anyone else?
So I guess how, if this is the list, can we be more, any more specific with, I know we're saying, you know, yes or no, and we've got some caveats. Are we pretty good with our CPA, ARPA splits on these?
So we're still, the maybes are still, we're still working those out. I think the yeses and nos, we're, we're very, we're solid on those. Yep. Okay. Just a few other items. So just so the Board is aware, FEMA is issuing new flood insurance rate maps for the most of Middlesex County, including Winchester. In Winchester, there was no new analysis done, so no new hydraulic or hydrologic analysis. It was just a remapping. So they basically took the exact same flood elevations and remapped it onto new topographic information. So the flood map boundaries may change, but the elevations are the same. So those maps are currently out for, for public comment. And so we will be working with Engineering Department. We're putting together a letter that we are planning to send to everybody that we have documented who's in a floodplain so that they are aware of that change. Some people may, may come in, come into the floodplain, some people may be removed from the floodplain. Beyond this appeal process, there is a standard letter of map change process with FEMA that homeowners can work through if they believe their property has been incorrectly mapped into a, into a floodplain. So I just wanted to notify you in case you got any questions from residents, as that letter will probably go out next week notifying people. Just a few construction updates. So DPW is out paving around town, weather permitting. The information on the roads that will be upcoming is up on the town's website, and we'll, we'll modify that as weather permits. And then finally, a few other construction updates. Transportation renovation is, is wrapping up, and we hope to have final paving completed later this month. Parker Swing Place is open. School started last week and the kids were all in the building and we had power, which was good news. The project is scheduled to be out to bid in October, so we'll have the full Lynch reconstruction project out this fall. Morocco School Electrical, the first phase of that work was completed at the end of August and the contract will be back in April over school vacation week to finish the, the remaining items. McCall School Masonry, the work at the front entry was completed this summer, and then there's some additional work that will be happening this fall in collaboration with the School Department. The biggest update is probably related to the Lake Street Bridge. That project, we've had a delay in the delivery of our precast element, so that the bridge opening date is currently pushed back. We currently have it scheduled for November 1st. That may be pushed back a little bit further unfortunately, depending on the precast schedule. Town Hall Fire Alarm work, that work will be starting this month. Woodside Road Winter Pond Improvements, that project will go out to bid for an early October bid opening. And then a few other projects. So Washington Cross Street Bridge Repairs, I spoke at a previous meeting that that, that project had come in over bid. So we had that bid opening back in June. We are using Chapter 90 money to complete the work at Cross Street Bridge this fall, and then we're going back to town meeting to get supplemental funding for the Washington Street Bridge project, and that work will be done in the spring. So Cross Street will go for this fall. The work is mostly underneath the bridge, so I think there'll be fairly minor compared to the Eversource project traffic disruptions, but hopefully we can wrap that up before winter. Winchester High School Drainage, we bid that project twice over the summer, and the second bid came in higher than what we had. So we're going back to Fall Town Meeting to get supplemental funding. McDonald Field Pump Station, so in your packet, in the list of articles, we have a new article that we've included for the Board to consider this evening to go on the Fall Town Meeting warrant. The bid opening for that project was August 30th, and the low bidder came in below the remaining appropriation, but when you add in the additional funds that we need for construction admin services and contingency, we need a little bit more money. And so I did hand out an updated cost summary there. So there is a, and we can, when we talk about the Fall Town Meeting article, because we need to talk about that article further if there's any questions. Lynch School Traffic Study and the Town Center Traffic Improvements, both of those studies are moving forward, and staff is working with our design engineer on those. And that's all I have for updates this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Any questions for Beth? All right. Hearing none. We will keep moving. At this point, I'd like to open it up for public comment. If anyone's here for public comment, you can raise your hand. I'll recognize you. You come to the table, state your name and address, and I'll give you up to three minutes to make your public comment. Is anyone here for public comment? Seeing nobody, we will move on to our next item, and that's Stacy Ward. Our Crom Patrolers Report. Hi Stacy, how are you?
Hi, how are you, everyone? It's been a while.
Good to see you. Been a little while. Been working very hard upstairs.
I've been busy. Finding money.
Apparently you have.
Yeah, well, it was, I hate, well, I shouldn't say I hate that. I hate to say that we've underestimated what our reserves are, but we did, and this is obviously, this is a good thing. We weren't sure how we were going to finish the year, and when you look at the report, the most important page is page one where it shows that we're 18% of our, what our policy is, is between six and 10 at the moment. We've always, oh, we, I shouldn't say always, we've been talking about raising that up to a couple percentage points. Haven't made any final decisions about it, but we finished really well this year at 18.64%. As you can see, our total operating reserves is 26.5 million. That's a combination of what our undesignated fund balance is, and that's in the general fund, with our general stabilization balance. And this week, we have the Department of Revenue coming in certifying, certifying our free cash, which is a component of undesignated fund balance. So I estimate it to be about $20 million. And the reason why that's so high is we didn't use as much free cash last year in preparation for future needs of our reserves in order to balance. for future needs of our reserves in order to balance future budgets. And some of the surpluses in revenues, our million dollar interest that we received pretty much, that's obviously, we budgeted twenty-five thousand just because of the way, the timing of our revenues in FY twenty-two when we closed the year. We can't really budget more than what we closed the year in that line item, so twenty-two, or twenty-five thousand dollar budget and a million dollar revenue, that's quite a bit of a jump. Actually, the investment earnings were forty grand for budgeted, but, so that was one of the areas where we were surprised and not expecting quite a bit of a turnback, an estimated surplus. Other areas, most of the other local receipts ended up coming in the positive. There is, I think, one line, other departmental revenue, that's very volatile, it's difficult to estimate. But overall, two point nine million of revenue surplus, added to three point three million of turnbacks on top of the free cash that we didn't use during the year. We, I think I mentioned that we used about fifteen percent of our free cash this year, whereas in past, we've used twenty to twenty-five percent. So it's good news. I don't know if anyone has any questions about any of the revenue lines, expense lines, and how things ended up in FY twenty-three? I don't want to go into too many details, but if you had any high level questions?
Just on the turnbacks, were those mostly from departments, salaries?
Yeah, the big one was health insurance. We knew we were going to have a savings. We had estimated around nine hundred thousand, not really knowing how many people were going to jump on the plan, jump off the plan. It ended up being one point two million, which was excellent. I think it gives us a lot of thought about what to do with that one point two million, if we want to put it in the health insurance stabilization fund, or if we want it to close to free cash and stay in free cash and use it for other things. I think that's going to be up for debate when we talk about the warrant articles. The idea is to put some money aside in the health insurance stabilization fund, and whether or not it's the entire amount, half of it, whatever, will kind of work out some policies. I think we're meeting about that.
Yep.
This week, actually.
Yep.
Figure out how to, how to deal with that. We don't, I did a summary of all the different turnbacks for the last, like, ten years, and they sort of range between, I think one was like seventeen thousand into this one point two million, so it's sort of all over the place where we get back. And it's all based on estimates, who's on the plan, who's off the plans. The biggest thing was negotiating the change in the health insurance plan. And then the departments, yes. So we had the Police Department, had a couple vacancies. They had planned on hiring four officers, but they only hired two. Fire Department, they had a lot of, they had some turnover, the chiefs changed. The Library, they had a real tumultuous, because it wasn't bad, they just had a lot of turnover, a lot of staff changes and management level positions. People came in at lower levels than where people were at, people retired. And I think, what else did I mention?
DPW, it looks like.
DPW had a few different areas of savings. Some of it was temporary, where they pushed stuff off to FY twenty-four, but a lot of it was, was permanent. Let's see, in the reserve fund, so we've been replenishing that at each of the town meetings, and we haven't, we didn't really use much of it, so. I think we had three hundred and something thousand left, which is all good. Let's see, anything else? That's probably about it for the turnbacks. Everything else was pretty normal in the range. And like I said, free cash, if you look at the analysis of the free cash, we only use fifteen point eight percent of it this year, whereas in the past couple of years, it was twenty-six, and then the previous year was twenty-four. So I know that's part of our planning for the future. And we haven't put our model together yet for the next five years, we're going to be working on that over the next month or two with town management, just to figure out where we're at with our numbers and where we want to be.
So Stacy, I've got a question on the overall reserve percentage, so.
Yes.
I know we might hear, you know, we talk about things going off the cliff, and then reserves go up, and I just wanted, the timing of the Lynch borrowing, when that debt exclusion and that revenue becomes available to us and goes in the denominator, and we still have our operating budgets in the numerator, when does that, is that FY twenty-six that we expect to be?
We've already borrowed twenty-six million of the seventy or so that's ours, so it's probably, it's going to be gradual. We'll have the twenty-six million this year, it's not going to be twenty-six million on the tax bill, but it's going to be the debt service of the twenty-six million. That will be, I believe, interest in FY, interest and principal in FY twenty-four, because we borrowed it in April on that debt. And we have plans to issue more debt next April, I believe, when our bands are due. We've got bands coming due in April.
So as we borrow more and have more available, we could do nothing different, and our reserves could start to shrink.
Absolutely.
Because we're borrowing more. I just wanted to say that, I think, for the record.
Yes, because the general fund revenue is the base, and even though there are debt exclusions, they do count and add to the revenues.
So that would be an extreme model, like, doing nothing, or spending free cash at, you know, eighteen percent versus twenty-two percent, just holding steady somewhere with additional borrowing and additional revenue coming in with debt exclusions. It puts pressure on that very healthy sounding eighteen percent.
Right.
Which could suddenly be sixteen, fourteen, and twelve. Maybe not as precip, not as quickly as that, but it does have pressure, which I think would just be maybe a useful thing for folks to see.
Means a percentage of our borrowing, or?
And just the growth in our revenue base anyway. That's going to grow.
Right.
Top of debt exclusions, so. And that includes the water and sewer, because those are treated like a debt exclusion, where we raise the taxes in the general fund, and then we send, you know, close to six million out to the water sewer fund. So that's impacting the bottom line as well. So that's.
And did schools have any turnbacks?
Um, hmm, not much. Uh, let's see, out of their sixty million dollar, sixty-one million dollar budget, they turned back twelve thousand dollars. So they're finding a home for their budget. With that said, their retained earnings for water and sewer, they're in good shape, and recreation's in excellent shape, but recreation, as far as their retained earnings, we had to estimate their revenues on the low side, because the Department of Revenue doesn't really allow you to increase the revenues when you're going, when you continually have not hit your revenue targets. They won't let you budget more than what you collected in the prior year. So last year, we reduced the estimated revenues for the Rec Department and used that funding, we used the retained earnings to fund the delta, but we, we sort of knew we were going to get that money, we just couldn't prove it to the DOR in order for them to certify the recap. So this year, it's going to be in the same, we're in the same situation where our revenue target is less than what we had budgeted and hoped for, so we're going to have to reduce our revenue target with retained earnings again at Fall Town Meeting. But knowing that we're going to get the revenue, so it's really kind of a retained earnings builder, even though we're using retained earnings, we're really not when it comes down to closing the year. But they have, when you look at, I think, page, page ten just outlines what their retained earnings are as a percentage of their revenues and transfers. And we don't have any set policies with the enterprise funds, but they're fairly healthy at this point in time. Retained earnings for water and sewer, it's a little on the lower side than what some consultants recommend, but we have been burying rate incre, not burying, but having rate increases and rate studies just to keep on target with that, just to make sure we have enough.
Okay.
So that's, that's the control report for FY twenty-three. There was one for twenty-four in your packet, I'm not going to go over that, it's July, it's just.
Just a month.
Yeah, it's just not much to talk about, but there was one thing I wanted to talk about, the PERAC actuarial summary. Real quick, it's just regarding where we're at with our pension liability and our unfunded liability, and I have to admit, it's, the results were way better than I had expected. The twenty twenty-one gains had really covered any loss we had in twenty twenty-two, because at the end of twenty twenty-two, I was really worried that we've really lost a lot, but we had gained a lot previously. And some of the reasons why the liability may have increased is we did a COLA, a one-time COLA increase for the retirees from the three percent to five percent, take advantage of what the state offered, so we did that for our retirees. And then the assets, like I said, they've increased quite a bit, which is great. This is a volatile fund, you know, one year it's great, the next year it tanks, the next year it's great, so this is something we always have to just keep an eye on. And PERAC surprisingly was comfortable with us staying at a seven percent discount rate, so this is the first year they haven't really recommended us dropping it down, which would increase the liability, so we're fine with keeping it at seven. And there were three funding alternatives in the letter. This isn't their full-blown study, this is just sort of their letter of how they came about with, how they, how they came about with their results. And the retirement board met back in, a couple weeks ago, at the end of August, just to go over the alternatives, and we were, we were leaning towards the alternative two. Gives us some savings in the next two years, but it doesn't, we don't want to fall too far off track of funding and really not focus on making sure we have enough money in the fund. So alternative one was keeping the seven point seven growth, which is high, but we really committed to making this, committed to funding this liability, because we know we've got this OPEB liability looming. And so we think alternative two is fair. We saved some money, but we don't save too much money, we're not forgetting about this liability, because anything can happen in two years. So I wanted to reach out to the board to see if you had any thoughts on the funding table, if you were really against the funding option number two, I'd report back to the retirement board. It's ultimately up to them, but I can certainly give them any feedback that you may have.
I read it. Well, it kind of keeps us on our path, so we don't, we could shorten the horizon, but we don't necessarily need to by putting more at it, so I'm kind of a fan of option two, having read your memo. And the goal is, once we fund that pension liability, is to then start to fund the OPEB liability. And so I think, and we can't predict returns, but a good return year, or at least staying on pace to close it out by the end of this decade.
Yeah, that would be good.
Shift to OPEB would be great. It's certainly something that we talked about, you know, eight or ten years ago.
Probably a little longer.
And so the, the plan is to have the OPEB update at the meeting on October sixteenth, and that we would, management's putting together a draft policy for the board to consider at that point as well.
And Stacy, and maybe it's Stacy Beth Rich, does any of this, you know, reserves, PERAC, borrowing, does any of this, given where we were last year with some, you know, interest in letters about our AAA bond rating, do any of these trends strengthen our position relative to last year's findings? And if so, which trends strengthen?
I would say the operating reserve certainly trends positively for us at an eighteen percent. They want us to go to twelve at least, I mean, they, they want everyone to elevate their reserves, but we have to be reasonable. We have all these needs and not so many resources that can go around to everybody, but that trends well for us, as well as the pension will trend well for us, because now, this cuts off two years. Our previous funding table was through twenty twenty-nine, so now this is only through twenty twenty-seven, so that's really good for us, because that now allows us to focus on OPEB and look at these liabilities combined. And we can get into that at the, at the October sixteenth meeting, just to show how some strategic planning in the future with these two liabilities as one, because we're always going to have to have this on our radar, because every two years, and even one of our board members mentioned seeing if we can do the pension actuarial study every year, just to make sure that we don't lose sight of it. And that might be a good idea, we haven't really thought too much about it, but seems like a decent idea. They're free right now with PERAC. I don't know if they'll be free if they ask them to do it every year, but we'll see. It might be worth it.
Just ask nicely.
Yes, yeah, so yeah, these are all things that are going to be in our favor for a bond rating review, definitely.
Thanks.
And a policy that's adopted that says that we're going to look at these together, and we're really going to focus on funding OPEB is huge, because it's really the only option we have. We don't have eight million dollars sitting around, other than what might be kicking around after this. Certainly not eight, but it's getting there.
And Stacy, we had talked about the operating reserve policy, raising that in response to what Moody's has suggested in some of the bond rating agencies. So I know we're at six to ten percent, I mean, have we thought about kind of phasing in some of that, maybe bringing the bottom up to seven, you know?
Yeah, we've definitely talked about it and thought about it, for sure. And just to see how it fits in. What we don't want to do is give ourselves a policy and not be able to follow it.
Right.
So we just have to really be cognizant of that, and as long as we're all on the same board that this maybe shifts from six to eight, from ten to twelve, so an eight to twelve, let baby steps and see how it goes.
Yeah, it seems like even the, I mean, and we'll talk about it, I'm sure, I'm not sure when we're having our agenda, but, you know, just moving, maybe just pumping up the bottom a little bit there, because it, you know, it tends to be when we're projecting towards that six percent anyways, that there's already a lot of red flags when we're at that point of kind of hovering around six percent, right?
Yeah, definitely.
So if they're looking for us to bump it up, I mean, us moving from eight to twelve, I mean, that's, that seems like that would take several years for us to get to that point where we would be.
It could, it's just a matter of everybody committing to it and believing in that.
Yep.
Everybody, all the different committees, everybody who wants money needs to know that that's really the driver of how we're going to, how we're going to spend our reserves.
Yep.
But on a side note, is if we have these extra reserves, we should also have a policy of how we should spend any excess. So if our target is twelve and we have eighteen, what do we do and how do we support funding different initiatives? Does ten percent go to capital? Does ten percent go to our long-term liabilities? Does ten percent go and stay in our general stabilization? Like, we should probably think about if we have more, how do we allocate it?
Yeah, I mean, there, it's, you know.
Because everybody wants it, it's just how do we, how can we say, this is, this is our process, and this is how we divvy it up?
Makes sense.
Two cents.
Makes sense. Any other questions for Stacy? As always, Stacy, we appreciate the thorough report you gave us, as always, and a lot of reading material and a lot of numbers, but generally, good news for the town, strong financial position. We thank everyone in the Comp Control's office who works tirelessly to do that, so thank you.
Thank you, and I'll send you an email about our free cash certification when it's certified.
Thank you.
We'll probably see you back in a couple weeks.
Yes, probably.
Oh, definitely.
All right. At this point, we're a little behind on our granted location license hearings, that were supposed to be at seven forty-five, so we'll do those quickly, hopefully. So we have one Verizon granted location at Wainwright Road, so Verizon, come on up. Matt, come on up. Matt, already a veteran, being here for two months, so. All right, go ahead.
Do you want to? Good evening, members of the Select Board. Name is Alexander, last name Marero, M-A-R-E-O. A resident of Seventeen Cross Street in Marlboro, Massachusetts. An employee of Pike, P-I-K-E Telecom and Renewables LLC, authorized contractor for Verizon New England Incorporated. Verizon New England has requested that I speak on their behalf of this petition. Verizon New England is hereby petitioning the Select Board of the Town of Winchester for permission to lay and maintain one four-inch conduit to begin at joint-owned number four two four dash three, and to run in a westerly direction approximately three feet to the proper line of three Wainwright, Wainwright Road. There's been request about Verizon New England on behalf of the owner of three Wainwright Road, the purpose is providing new service to this address. I can also answer any questions that the Select Board might have about this petition.
Matt, do you have anything to add?
Engineering has no comments.
All right. At this point, I'd open it up to anyone from the public here on this granted location at three Wainwright Road in Winchester. Seeing no public comment on this, any discussion by the board or any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the Verizon granted location to install approximately three feet of conduit from the public right-of-way to provide Verizon service to development at three Wainwright Road.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Thank you very much for your time, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Eversource for a granted location at three Wellington Road. How are you?
How are you tonight?
Good.
I'm Jeff Medoffi of Eversource. We'd like to install approximately fourteen feet of conduit on Wellington Road. This is necessary to provide service to three Wellington Road.
Anything from Engineering?
Engineering has no comments.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public here for the granted location for Eversource for three Wellington Road that would like to make a comment? Seeing nobody, we'll close that portion of the hearing. And any discussion or questions by the board? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Move that we approve the Eversource granted location to install approximately fourteen feet of conduit within the public right-of-way to provide electrical service to three Wellington Road.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously, thank you. Thanks, Matt.
Only the houses number three got the three today.
Only three. Go play the lottery on the way home. Play those, play those threes. Three's the number. Okay, moving on to our business agenda, we have some climate action advisory committee positions to consider. We have a position, we have two positions, one student position and one regular position to fill, and I know we have some people to interview this evening, so at this point, let's start with the, I don't want to say adult position, but the regular position. And we have two excellent candidates to interview, so we have Rachel Chidzie, I hope I pronounced So, we have Rachel Chidzie, I hope I pronounced that right, and Caroline Stott.
Stout.
Stout? Great. Why don't we start with Rachel? So, I'd ask you to come on up to the table, grab a seat, and introduce yourself, and we can kind of go from there.
Hi, everyone. My name is Rachel Chidzie.
And Rachel, what would you like to tell us? We have your application in the packet, but is there anything else you want to tell us about your application for the Climate Action Advisory Committee?
Um, I guess I would just like to say that I'm extremely passionate about climate action and sustainability, and I do feel that it touches, you know, all of our lives, sort of, in, in every aspect. But, you know, I made changes to my own life, my family's life, our lifestyle. I started volunteering in town, and I would really like the opportunity to get more involved in the Town of Winchester, and specifically with the Climate Action Plan. And I feel with my experience and my education, and sort of the bandwidth I have to, to give to the committee, that I would be, I would be a great asset to the committee to help move forward the action, the Climate Action Plan that you guys have set out.
Any questions for board members?
I'll, I'll just ask, is there any specific interest or goal that the Climate Action Advisory Committee has that you'd be interested in sort of taking the lead on or, or pursuing in that area?
Everything. The, the goal to reduce, you know, the greenhouse gas emissions is certainly the avenues that have been set out to do that certainly interest me in terms of, especially around residential homes and the changes that can be made there. I have some experience of that as well, and sort of those steps that can be taken. And building community resiliency, you know, is, is equally important. And so, I am interested in that as well. But, I would say that reading through the Climate Action Plan, that's probably something that I'm more familiar with at this point, which is helping to reduce what we're producing.
Very good. Other questions by board members? So, you seem to have extensive experience looking at your application here. Is there anything you can point to that you think, being new to Winchester, that you can rely on in helping the Climate Action Committee?
Sure. Well, in my, in my past profession, you know, I've had to work with many different teams and, and people, sort of through, through the company that I was working for, whether it be a colleague, or, you know, up to the CEO. And so, I think the ability to, what's the word I'm looking for? Kind of just work with these people, communicate effectively, you know, look at data and present it in a way that other people can understand, and, and come to an agreement and an outcome, and drive projects forward. I have a lot of experience with that, which I think could be helpful in this type of a committee. Yeah.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll have Caroline.
Caroline.
Come on. Caroline, how are you?
How are you? Thank you very much.
Do you want to introduce yourself to the board and tell us why you're interested in this position?
Yes. So, I'm Caroline Stott at two New Meadows Road, and I don't want to repeat too much. I didn't have my application in front of you, but I spend my time during the days trying to work on the environmental impact specifically of the running industries and the textile industry. And in my past career, I was, past two careers, first as an attorney, but then more recently spent almost a decade as a Realtor in Winchester and surrounding towns, and really saw the impact that environmentally efficient homes and the change in that, people who 10 years ago were saying, oh, solar, and saw that as kind of a negative thing, it's ugly, we don't like it on our homes. And really, the shift of now that's, has a positive impact on home values. And I think that a lot of the items in the plan, specifically around residential buildings, not only have an impact on the environment, but also have an impact on Winchester as a desirable town. And same thing with transportation plans, anything that sort of increases pedestrian access and bike access really makes Winchester a more desirable town to be in. So, coming at it both from the angle of, I think, environmental or climate action being kind of a non-negotiable right now, I think it also is something that really helps Winchester become a more desirable town.
Great. Questions by the board?
Yeah, I'll ask the same. Is there, you kind of mentioned just some of the specifics, but is there anything specifically within the, that the committee is working on or in the action plan that you'd be interested in?
So, I just touched on this a little bit, but just expanding more specifically around transportation. I think buildings are the area where I probably have the most experience in looking at residential buildings and understanding, but transportation is a little bit of a pet area and potentially pet peeve of mine in the town. And realizing that this is not, this is a walkable town, but it is not used as a walkable town by a lot of our residents. And so, my son, walking to McCall in the mornings, who walks about a mile and a quarter from New Meadows, but he's one of the few who's walking that far. It's doable, but it doesn't always feel safe. He doesn't like to bike because that doesn't feel safe. So, anything we can do to make it easier for people to not be taking their cars and not feel like they have to take their kids in a car every day to school when it's really not that far. Sort of the, something I'd love, that, the transportation aspect is something I'd love to focus in on.
Anyone else? I'll go. You talk about green ostrich, ostrich in your resume. Can you just elaborate on that?
Yeah, so this is a newer venture project, but it's largely around education and advocacy on climate issues, specifically, again, it takes a few different turns depending on my mood in the, that day, but mostly around clothing and around running and the intersection of the two. So, spending a lot of time looking at, for instance, what are road races doing? And we think of running, anyone who's a runner thinks of running as being kind of a low-impact sport. You put on a pair of shoes, you go. Those shoes actually have really high impact. Road races, like the Boston Marathon, where people are traveling all internationally for, has a massive environmental impact. So, it's some education and advocacy around those issues, and how can things like the Boston Marathon reduce their environmental impact? Or how can an individual looking at their own closet reduce their environmental impact? And it's not go out and buy all the back-to-school clothes all the time, it's maybe look at some different options. Trying to just provide some education and then advocacy around that.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Caroline.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
At this point, I think we should discuss the regular full-time position before we get to the students, if that's okay for everybody? Does that make sense?
Sure.
So, how many positions are there available here?
One, one position, right?
Yes.
One right.
Josh, Josh Beers is a reappointment position, and Jason is the other candidate who's supposed to be reappointed, but they don't, did not want to.
Okay, so this is Jason's?
This is Jason's.
Okay.
So, Josh?
Do we need to bring him up tonight? Josh?
Yes, and you three, so, every year, there's two Climate Action Advisory Committee members that have to be reappointed. And so, Josh said he wanted to be reappointed, and Jason said he did not. So, that's why there's one vacant position. And the student position is yearly.
Okay.
Okay.
I know that we've talked about it a little bit, you know, over a period of time, but, you know, adding number of positions on the Climate Action Advisory Committee, and, you know, I don't know our ability to do that, but, you know, we have two really good candidates for the position. And, you know, we certainly need to be, have the pedal to the floor with our climate action efforts. And so, I don't, I don't know if that's something the board would entertain. I know that complicates, you know, things a little bit with quorum and, you know, the size of the committee and having it be an even number, but seems like it would be wise? I don't know. Let's see what, anyone else thinks? It's, it is one of our smaller committees, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. Is that within our power to do at this point in time?
I would want to consult Mary Ellen before we did anything, voted on that, but certainly something you could consider going forward.
I, I would agree with you that we have two excellent candidates.
Yeah.
That would make it extremely difficult to say no to one of them. I don't know Josh. I don't know if any of you do. But, it's tough to say no to these two candidates. So, how many members are on Climate Action? Anyone know?
Hold on a second.
Well, Pat, you know, I can speak for myself. I didn't have many questions because their applications were so thorough. It's probably some of the thickest applications we've gotten for a volunteer position. So, the, you can just see, when they come up here, their passion for the, for the, for the causes, so.
There are seven, and each of, for two years, and the seventh person is a student. So, two regular, well, adult positions.
My only concern with doing that is if they have trouble having a quorum right now. I wouldn't want to add burden by adding another person, but otherwise, I wouldn't disagree with that. I think it's really hard to make a decision between these two candidates, and I think they both have excellent backgrounds and skills that they can bring to that committee that, you know, it would be a real asset to, to add both, and a shame to not.
And I can't speak for every member of that committee, but the, the members that I have, at least some, seen come before us, I mean, these two have certainly different backgrounds that have different skill sets that I think would certainly, their activism, you know, would certainly assist, as, as Mike said, kind of get that committee moving again. So, why don't, I, I, we won't make you come back in, but maybe we can table this, we can check with Mary Ellen, Beth, and maybe just put this on our next meeting.
Yeah, with Rick, too.
And see what they say.
You know, Jason coming off the, you know, committee, you know, is, you know, he was an excellent, very active member as well, and I know that he's gotten busy with other things and, you know, wasn't able to do it, but, you know, he's, he's a big loss there as well.
Sure. I agree. So, why don't we do that and put, put this over for our next meeting to make it, to deliberate? We won't make you come back in, but we'll certainly deliberate and see what we can do.
And we should probably reappoint Josh before we move off to the students.
Do you want to do that now? Okay.
Good.
Sure. I don't know Josh. I don't know anything about him. I mean, I, you know, I...
We can put it all off for the next time, so we can just take it all together.
Yeah, we take it all together.
Student we should deal with now.
Well, let's do it to students.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, so we have three students to interview for one spot. So, we have Rachel Chidzie. I'm, I'm sorry, we just did that.
No, I'll take that.
Nope. Not a student yet.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have Vida, and I'm going to, that, that, like, help me with your last name.
Okay.
Okay. Why don't you come on up? We'll interview you first.
All right.
Why don't you introduce yourself to the board and just, we have your application. Thank you for submitting that, and just tell us, you know, why you're interested in this position.
Is this on? Oh, it is. Okay, wonderful. Hello, everyone. My name is Vitalina Velovska. I go by Vida. It's much easier. I'm a sophomore at Winchester High School, and I'm extremely passionate about climate change, mitigating climate change, and especially climate resilience within Winchester.
Anyone have any questions for Vida?
I can, I can expand upon that.
Sure, go ahead.
All right. Well, I've had some previous experience with climate activism, especially within Winchester, but also on a state level. I'm a member of Art Climate, as well as Massachusetts Youth Climate Coalition. I'm a field representative for them, and I've focused mostly on air quality work and helping out there. But, I'm, I am also extremely passionate about climate education as well, and I am working on a workshop, environmental education workshop with NFSJ, that will be premiering during Indigenous Peoples' Day, mainly with a youth focus. Growing up in Winchester, surrounded, surrounded by my peers, I know that there is a bit of a lack of climate curriculum in our school system. So, one of the things I would be excited to work on would be revolving around that. As well as, I also wanted to mention in this, I've noticed that there has been a lack of heat infrastructure, heat resilient infrastructure at our schools, especially with the heatwaves that happened a year back. Well, that was mostly what sparked my interest in climate change, and, you know, it, it really affected us. And another project I would be extremely interested in would be working around that, and, you know, fundraising and grant writing to, to implement certain mitigation strategies for that.
I think your fellow students would really appreciate that, probably, especially after last week.
Oh, yeah. No, it was really hot.
Heard that. Questions for Vida? So, have you been involved with the Climate Action Committee at this point before this year, or no?
I have attended a meeting along with Malia Satterland, who's also interviewing for this position in about August, but I wasn't exactly aware of this position until my biology teacher told me about it, Mr. Marshand. I'm also co-president, I'm, I have been involved in environmental-related extracurriculars in the past year, ever since I've been in Winchester High School and before that as well. I'm an FXB climate advocate, graduated from that program. I'm co-president of our environmental club with, and I'm also co-president and co-founder of Winchester High School Sunrise, which is more of a climate advocacy group that we're starting up this year with Malia Satterland again. Yeah. So, that's some of my previous experience. I can go further on that if you'd like.
That's good. Anyone from the board have anything?
It's pretty impressive.
Very impressive, really impressive. Like I said, I mean, as I said to the adults that were here, their, their applications were very thorough, so did the students. Extremely impressive, really makes me feel like an underachiever when I was in high school. So, thank you for your advocacy and all you do on behalf of the students and, you know, for climate change. But, we'll hear from the others, and then we'll make a decision.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It'll stay on.
All right. Is it Madalena? Madeline Colbert?
Hello.
Madeline? Sorry. How are you?
Hello.
Why don't you introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself?
I'm Madeline Colbert. I'm a 12th grader at Winchester High School. I've been sitting on Climate Action Advisory Committees for the past year and a half. I have, I tried to pass a bylaw with my father regarding the idling laws in the town, and that's where I met Ruth Jamarkey, who recommended that I sit on these meetings. And at first, I only wanted to sit on a few, but I got really inspired by the people there. I learned that each person has their own individual project, and I didn't know that, like, it never occurred to me that one person could, could, could kind of start and finish their own project. I thought that you would have to have like a whole group together to do something that big. And it really widened my perspective on what I could do as a singular person. So, since then, I've been working on reinstating the composting program at our high school. I have great connections with the, with Ms. Paradise, Ms. Conis, and Mr. Mahoney are vice principals and principals there, and they're encouraging me through this, this part. And I, I also want to introduce compostable cutlery to all of the, to the high school, the middle school, and the elementary schools, and I'm working on a grant for that right now. And I have their full support, and, yeah, that's what I'm working on.
Wow.
Underachiever again.
Another, another underachiever.
Regardless of if I get this position, I would still be more than honored to sit in on the meetings every day, every time they meet.
Great. Questions for board members? Again, another thorough application. You know, thank you for... You know, thank you for submitting. Uh, thank you for all your work you've done. I get exhausted just listening to all the, uh, all that you do, and this is outside the academic classroom. So, um, you know, kudos to you for being so involved and, um, you know, and your willingness to, to be on this committee as well. Other questions or comments?
I guess one question I would have, having sat as a non-voting member for a year and a half, do you feel like you're, you're ready to step into that voting role? You understand the sort of, you know, what votes are? Are you committing to the cycle and the sequence of, of topics?
Yes. Uh, since I started sitting in our meetings, I want to say I've only missed like two. And I've seen two high school voting members go through, and I've stayed in touch with them. So I know, uh, the commitment level that it takes. And I've watched them succeed in that position, and I feel like I'm ready to do the same thing as well.
Well, thank you, Maddie.
Thank you for consideration.
And then we have, is it, um, Malia?
Yeah, it's Malia.
Malia Soderland.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Same thing. Do you want to just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, of course. Um, I'm Malia Soderland. I'm a sophomore at Winchester High School. And I'm very excited about this opportunity. Thank you so much for considering me. Um, I've been very passionate about climate change over the past five years. I have, uh, hosted town halls. I have written research papers. I have led a workshop with, uh, the Winchester Girl Scouts around climate change. I'm working with a lot of organizations, statewide and nationwide organizations, that are centered around climate action and climate policy, such as Our Climate, Massachusetts Climate Coalition, Boston Climate Action Network, and many others. Um, and most recently, I've been able to co-found a climate action club within our school with Vida, um, which is really exciting. Um, I was fortunate to be able to go to one of the CAC meetings and meet some of the members. And what they're doing is really, really wonderful and impactful, um, to implement the climate action plan within Winchester. Uh, and I'd love to be a part of that and love to work with them on that. I think that also a lot of the plans of the CAC, a lot of their plans really align with the goals of our club as well. And I'd love to be a bridge between the high school as well as the town and help, you know, accelerate and accommodate, or accelerate and improve and really amplify the action that we're trying to accomplish. Because we really, as you have said, really need to step on our pedal here and really get some work done. Um, but the work they're doing is wonderful, um, and I'm really excited to be a part of it.
Thank you. Questions for anyone?
I just, um, I'm really impressed with all of, all of your backgrounds. And I'm heartened both by having, you know, multiple excellent candidates at the student level for this position, as well as, um, two excellent candidates for, for the other position. I have a small child, so I say grown-up all the time. The grown-up position. Uh, but, um, I think it just shows, as does the weather last week and, um, the kids walking out of elementary school after half-day, just covered in sweat for, for sitting in, in schools. Um, I think it just really shows that there's a, a very big, um, interest in doing as much as we can to, around climate and around improving the community that we're in and, and how we can benefit all of our residents with that.
If I may add, um, I'm really interested in learning more about how, uh, town policy works, especially in Winchester. And, um, I'm also planning to hopefully, I'm very interested in at least, um, going into environmental science and public policy for college and beyond. So I really appreciate this opportunity. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, we have three students. Uh, we have one voting student member, but as I understand it, uh, many students, or I shouldn't say many, but some students will stay on, go to the meetings and tend as non-voting members to participate. Uh, kind of have like a pipeline of people like Maddie has done for the last year and a half, which I think is fantastic, uh, to get, you know, some experience watching the committee in action and then, you know, kind of growing into that voting role. So, just so board members know how this works.
I think, picking up on that, I think I'm inclined to advance Maddie as the voting member, having served the year and a half and, and attending pretty consistently. It's a good sign when you go to a meeting and want to keep going in meetings. And would encourage Vida and Malia to show up as non-voting members. Maddie's gonna, you know, she's, she's a senior this year. There, in theory, there'll be an opening next year.
Right.
And I think some, all have some, you're all impressive. I mean, public speaking at your age, I'm just blown away. Truly. But you, you all have initiatives that you want to see and follow through, which I encourage you to do so. Uh, and so I think I'm, I would put my, my vote behind Maddie and sort of elevate her to that voting role and encourage, uh, Vida and, uh, Malia to continue to stay engaged.
Great. Others?
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo what Michelle said. And I, I also really look forward to hearing about the initiatives that, um, these three students are doing. And, um, sort of seeing what, what those impacts are, especially, um, this is like, climate was not really, we knew about acid rain. Rain, this was not really a, a major, uh, issue. And so I think it's, it's really important that climate action is going down. It's, you know, not just at the high school level, but also really getting down to our, um, middle school, elementary school level and getting, you know, everybody really involved.
Yeah, I'll just say, you know, thank you for everyone being willing to serve the community and to, um, learn. It's really an impossible task ahead of us, really, to choose between these three top-notch excellent candidates. And, um, you know, makes me kind of hopeful for these efforts in the future as well. And maybe part of our discussion of how we broaden, um, the town government's connection to students more formally around climate action specifically. When we had the, um, a civic gathering a few years back that was focused on youth, th- this was the number one concern that was raised by far. Um, and, uh, so certainly we've been doing a lot, um, ourselves, but, um, we can certainly learn from the students as far as what we're doing. And, um, and I think it's helpful to, to learn how town government works and doesn't work as you're younger to, you know, make change in the future. So, um, I think, um, Michelle's reasoning around, um, you know, putting Maddie forward, you know, is that, is, makes sense to me. I, I understand that and I, um, but it, but it is a very difficult, um, you know, decision to, to make for me because there's such a breadth of, um, real activism here. You know, not just signing up for committees due, but I, I get a sense that all these candidates, um, they get, they roll up their sleeves and get things done. So, um, so I, I would support that if that's where the, the board is heading.
Yeah, no, I agree with everyone's sentiments so far. I think Maddie's, being a senior, doesn't have any opportunities left. Uh, so certainly I think she's got the edge there. But, um, three excellent candidates, um, you know, I'm glad that we have, uh, the, uh, club that has been started by Vida and, uh, Malia of, uh, the Climate Action Club. So, uh, hopefully that will, um, take off and be a bridge to kind of this organization and to, uh, what the students advocacy, um, are doing at, at that level. But, again, blown away by all the candidates. Um, I really feel like a slacker. And I love these meetings because I go home and I feel really good about our community and, and where we're at. So, um, so I would vote for, for Maddie as well. So I don't know if anybody will want to take a motion.
I'll make the motion. Move that we appoint Madeline Colbert to the student position on the Climate Action Committee for a term to expire August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you all for coming tonight. Vida and Malia, stay active, and I'm sure, you know, uh, we'll see you back here at some point. So thank you very much for all you do for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very impressive.
All right, um, continuing on with the climate theme. Jen Murphy's here to talk about the Minuteman Household Hazardous Waste Intermunicipal Agreement. Jen, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Tough act to follow.
Honestly. Very impressive. So we're here to talk about the intermunicipal agreement.
Yes.
Um, we hope to join a, did you, are we waiting? Sorry.
Nope, go right ahead. You can continue.
We hope to join the, um, the regional collaborative with eight other towns. Uh, it's been quite difficult, um, the past couple of years to find a contractor to come and do, hold a disposal waste day for us, um, twice a fiscal year. And the prices have also skyrocketed. And so the concept of joining a collaborative where you would have guaranteed events, in fact, there will be eight of them if we join this collaborative at a fixed location, would be ideal, uh, for not only the residents, but also for those of us who have to try to go out and solicit bids and try to get a contractor who is, has reasonable rates. So in any event, the intermunicipal agreement would be signed. The events would be held in Lexington at their DPW facility, as I mentioned, eight times a year. That would be, um, April through November, I believe, once a month. We would have pre-registration of cars, although people could, people could show up that day in Lexington, even if they weren't pre-registered and take advantage of that. And we would pay, um, in the budget, my budget currently, in the health department budget, there is twenty-six thousand dollars allocated to this. And so we wouldn't exceed that unless, you know, there was some type of outcry for, uh, demand for, for further participation, in which case obviously I'd go through the normal channels to secure more funds. But, yeah, so that's where we're at right now, and Beth would need your permission to sign into this agreement.
And then just to, um, this has been reviewed extensively by town council, went back a few times.
So Jen, I just have a couple of questions. In terms of how it works, so a Winchester resident, presumably if, if we join this agreement, they could show up at this facility. You said pre-registration, or they could just show up? And is there any fee to the resident?
No.
When they show up?
No.
Okay, so the town covers the costs if you have. And is that for people who have transfer station stickers, or is it anybody that lives in the town?
Any resident, any resident.
And we talk about just costs. It seems like, and it seems like they've been doing this for a little while, these towns, but it's, um, is it, and they have a whole formula of how they divide the cost, but is it, is it, is it based on, you know, who uses it the most? Or is it, you know, across the board? I mean, what are other communities paying?
Yeah, so they, they, in terms of breakdown of pricing, they, they, basically it's a setup fee that we all share the cost of. And that's, um, five, fifty-six hundred dollars for every event. So right off the bat, we all divide that by nine and pay that for eight events. And then, um, the company, the collection company keeps track of the size of the loads, of the car loads. So there's small, medium, and large, and there's a price assigned to each type of those loads. So they will track, um, track that and then bill us after the event for that.
And are they checking, like, someone would have an ID or some, how do they know they're from Winchester?
Yes.
How's that work?
Yeah, they do. They check IDs. So they require to, if, everyone's assigned sort of a date, like, one day would be a Winchester event day. So we would have to send two staff members to essentially do the administrative function of checking IDs and making sure folks are from the towns that they, you know, are part of the collaborative.
Okay. And are those staff, are those like specific days for Winchester only, or are they for other towns as well?
All eight events are for all members of the collaborative. So Winchester residents can take advantage of all eight communities. It's just in order to figure out who staffs it, we, they're assigned it.
And, do you know what the total budget was of the whole operation in a year? Like, they, they mentioned they budget before June thirtieth every year, but do you know what the total amount was for like last year?
I don't, because I don't, no, I can find out, but I don't know.
And the reason why I ask is because it says the maximum that you could be charged is up to twenty-five percent for the total budget. So I didn't know what, what that was. I assume if you're dividing everything by nine, it's much cheaper, but.
Right. Yeah, and I, I just would, um, you know, we have the ability to control, like, if, we could do seven events and say, like, we've kind of maxed out budget-wise, we could not participate in the final event if we didn't want to.
Right, we can control that.
Right.
We can shut it off.
But it sounds like we're agreeing to a budget every year. By June thirtieth, they, they want you to commit to that year's budget.
Right, so if I say twenty-six thousand, I, I believe they're expecting twenty-five percent of that upfront. I assume just to ensure they get paid.
Okay.
But, um.
That was my, that was my other question about the budget. You know, June thirtieth seems like a tough date for us to be able to budget for the next fiscal year. So I don't know. I mean, we typically do the budget in February and March, but you're gonna know your number, I guess, so.
Right. Hopefully I have a sense of that.
Yeah.
So, I guess, two questions. One would be, do we have any data on like, uh, you know, Belmont, which has similar population, or any of the other towns, what they're spending?
Yes, and it, it varies widely. I think it probably is a function of how much promotion and how much are you advocating that your folks get out there. But, um, so I spoke with the, some similar towns like Belmont, and I believe last, last year they spent, um, eleven thousand dollars or so. You know, it's, again, it's a function of, I think, how much people want to travel to the next town, which may be a little bit of a barrier initially. I think people have to get used to it, so I think we really need to, to push that in all venues.
And then with this, by joining this collaborative, would we no longer have our own hazardous waste or have them locally, you know, less frequently? I'm just curious, what happens to, does this just eliminate Hazardous Waste Day in Winchester? Or it generally eliminates Hazardous Waste Day in Winchester?
It eliminates it in Winchester. But it also guarantees that there will be events, and I've come awfully close to not having any, which isn't a good feeling, to not hold that out to people.
Is there a cost that we would, we would know how, sorry? What have been our previous costs on doing hazardous waste disposal on the Winchester days?
So in a fiscal year of, it's increased, obviously, a little bit over time, but for the past few years, it's, it's gone around twenty-four, twenty-five. Now I'm up to twenty-six thousand dollars.
And we used to be able to hold two events for that amount, but it's getting harder and harder to be able to do the two events with that budget.
Okay, so it's been, for a year for us to do two events, twenty-six thousand dollars, and now it's like one of them.
In twenty-three, you only did one event. Right, and so in twenty-three, we ran into a major hurdle, hurdle where, um, the companies either couldn't find one of reasonable cost, so ended up paying a contractor about ten thousand dollars more to be able to hold out two events in that year. So that is why I'm swi, I would like to switch to this model because it allows us to stay within our budget and have guaranteed events. And there's a, I can give this to you after, there's, uh, some history on the data that I put together.
So, to, go ahead.
No, I was just, I mean, they've been doing this for thirty-five years.
Long time or so.
Yeah.
Yeah, my only question is, we're supposed to appoint someone to this advisory board, for lack of a better word. So it says, appointed by the appropriate authority. Is that the select board, or is that the Board of Health? Do you know?
I don't know. It's funny, so that board is made up of, and I've just been sort of sitting in to try to glean some knowledge about the process, but, um, in some towns, it's a DPW staff member that's on the board. It depends who's in control of your hazardous waste day in that town. So in this, in this case, I imagine it would be the Board of Health, unless someone else wants to take it over.
I just don't know who they're appointing, I mean, I, I think by default, we're the appointing authority. I just, it's just pretty vague in the agreement. So I, it just says the appropriate appointing authority
Yeah.
from every community. So I just, just something we need to clarify with town council of who that, who that would be. And then, you know, we're locked in for a year. I mean, that's basically, you know, we can, we can, we can get out of this.
True, we're treating it like a pilot.
Yep.
See how it goes.
And when would it start if we were to authorize?
Soon as you sign it, I'm gonna push out there. I would like to get involved for the October event.
All right. Any other questions? Thoughts?
Seems like a good idea. Yeah.
Yeah, seems like worth a try.
Yes.
All right. If there's a motion, we can authorize...
Yeah, I move that we authorize Winchester to enter into the intermunicipal agreement with Arlington, Bedford, Belmont, Concord, Lexington, Lincoln, Wildland, Pontcharlton, and Winchester for hazardous waste disposal and authorize...just checking who to sign.
Yeah, I would sign.
And authorize the town manager to sign on our behalf.
Say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Thanks, Jen.
Next up, our friends from EverSource. You guys sicker me up?
Good evening, everybody.
Never? Come on.
He said friends, so...
That's welcome.
Well, you guys have been busy. We appreciate all your hard work in getting a major part of this project wrapped up before school in the nick of time, so thank you for that. But I don't...you've given us a little report here, but I don't know if you want to just run through where you're at, where you've been, and where you're headed, kind of thing.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Jeff's just on here for EverSource. I would like to start by saying good evening to the board, and I would like to offer my sincere apology, my sincere apologies for last Tuesday for the miscommunication on the rerouting on Cross Street. So, this is totally our fault. I take full responsibility for it, and since then, we've been improving communication with the police department, along with the field personnel, to ensure that when we say that after pullback or after any activities that we're going to remove, roadblock, casual rerouting, that we do it by the time we say that we're going to do it. So, we're working on improving in that regard, and I hope the board is okay with that.
We are.
Okay. Quick update on construction. So, as you know, the pullback was finished on Tuesday, September 5th. That was successfully completed. Since, we've been working, mobilizing to complete the two ends, that's the exit and entry pit by Forest and Halton Street. So, that's a two weeks...three weeks' activity with one week to restore water and sewer, like, utility that we'll bypass in that section. So, our next step is Menhoe 405, which we've been working diligently with the DPW and the police department on putting together a traffic plan. So, this morning, I sat down with Sergeant Bachelor at the police department in Winchester, and basically, the goal is to establish no more detour on Cross Street and one-lane alternate traffic, while working simultaneously on Menhoe 405 and Menhoe 300 Cleveland. That will be overlapping for about a week or so with finalizing the HDD on...by Forest Street. So, that's the goal for the foreseeable future. And we're planning on finishing Menhoe 405 or that whole stretch on Cross Street by November 15th, which is the moratorium date.
All right, we're going to hold you to that.
That's why we're here. We're just...we're here in good faith and we're hoping to continue this, you know, great relationship with the town.
Okay. Questions or comments by anybody?
If everyone looks. Because I live it.
Do you live on Cross Street? Not too far.
Very close. So, one thing that I do notice as I'm going through that area is, and I know you're working there just about every day, so you're opening and closing the roads, but the roads there and at times this...actually, the sidewalks, especially by the vet, can be in really rough shape, so just to continue to be considerate about that, but then also, as the work wraps up, to kind of consider what...not that the road necessarily was perfectly smooth before and going into the winter, but there's a lot of sort of ruts and things there, so think of how that can best be wrapped up.
Trust me, the DPW director and staff, they've been on it. And we meet on a bi-weekly basis every other Tuesday, but the plan moving forward starting the following week is to move on a...to meet on a weekly basis where we address all these issues. So, spoke to McCord this morning. Trevor is bringing someone in to evaluate the restoration on Washington Street and the Davidson Park. We'll have any valve by hopefully end of the week, the following week, and we'll bring in someone that will be completing the work within two weeks before the end of September.
And there'll be town input on that and monitoring, especially Davidson Park and that area?
Yeah, so I'm surprised...I thought you were going to be in Washington Street Park through the end of November.
We will probably be...we're bringing someone in to evaluate the two. Washington Street might take a little bit longer, but we can start looking at moving out of there. A lot of the pipe that's stored there is access HDD pipe now. It's not the...necessarily the, you know, we've done the HDD, right? So, that pipe is additional 20-inch pipe that we have, so we can start to look at turning that over to EverSource and looking at a restoration plan.
Okay.
Washington Street's a little bit more complicated, Sergeant.
Sure, no, go ahead.
Just because it's got the irrigation system and everything, so...
Yeah, yeah.
I wanted to submit things and talk to you.
Yeah, I think that Washington Street, I would imagine, would probably be spring restoration. Davidson Park, there's a Conservation Commission meeting tomorrow night to talk about the planting plan that you guys have developed.
Yes, the vendor will be doing both, but I think Davidson Park would be the first that they will be targeting.
Yeah, and I think the big thing on Davidson Park for us is let's get the fence out of there, let's get all the materials out of there, and let's get back to level ground and hydroseeded. At least we can do that in short order and allow people to start using the park again.
Yep.
And as far as moving the pipes from Washington Street, I'm already working with EverSource Station Operation, so we're making space at Station 211 right now, so we can transfer those to Station 211.
Who else? I think it's important, obviously, to have one lane of traffic open and alternating traffic, you know, especially for those businesses now that we're in, you know, the school session and all those kids' activities are down in that area, so certainly appreciate you being able to do that and not detour, you know, people all around. If for some reason that changes, I just hope we can blast that out and include that into the school community as well.
Yes.
Because, like I said, 30% to 40% of the kids probably go to an after-school activity down in that area at some point during the week, so if for something...if some...for some reason that has to happen, which I hope it doesn't, just that we, you know, really take the extra steps to communicate that out to everybody, including the businesses. Because I was down there last Tuesday, you know, the business that I was at, the poor woman was kind of frantic. It seemed like a rough day, so just started recessions and everything going on outside didn't help, so that would be helpful. This seems like a very aggressive schedule. Very aggressive, you know, given New England and the weather, but if you think you can do it, you know, it's great. I think the...I think the community would look forward to you guys wrapping up as quickly as possible, but understanding, you know, that you're going to do the best you can. So, if you have hiccups or anything like that, I just ask you to continue to be transparent with our Town Mayor's Office, DPW, police, so that we can address them, because, you know, out of everything that we have going on in the town, this project probably generates the most feedback, at least to me.
I understand that.
Rich, just to be clear, the...over at, I guess I'll call it, Main Street and Cross, there may still be some detours that run that loring loop.
Yep.
Where we're out in the middle of the road, it's just that the duck bank's literally out in the middle of the road. I think Jeff T. was referring to as any additional work on Cross.
No additional detour, but that one, I think it's Window Street, it goes around Window Street, so we'll keep that until we finalize that Menhoe 3 section.
Hold on a second, is that...
Menhoe 3 to Cleveland, I believe in the schedule, we're proposing four weeks now.
Four weeks?
Yes.
As we come up, we're about 14 feet deep there, as we put in the duck bank and then put the water line in on top of the duck bank, as we come up, if we can...if we can bring it back to alternating traffic, we will.
Okay.
We'd almost honestly rather prefer the alternating traffic. We've just got to get the areas that are in the middle of the road paved out.
And where are you with on, not that this is Winchester, but Lake Ave? Because I know that's another cut through.
Lake Ave has got a good four to six weeks left. There is a...they're moving down, down the road now as we speak. They're making pretty good progress, but they do still have to get all the way to Border and Pickering. So, they've probably got another 300, 400 feet to get there.
And when do you anticipate that wrapping up?
We'd like to get that wrapped up before the moratorium, so I would think, you know, like, we're working there actively right now, so, you know, four to six weeks from now, I would hope that would be done.
All right. Well, thank you guys for coming and giving an update. I'm sure we'll be in touch.
Sure.
But thank you for all your work in the town.
Thanks for all your help with the HDD.
Thank you for your ongoing support.
Appreciate it.
It's Bob, your phone. Nice, Bob. Oh. Think so, are you good?
I'm good.
Very good. Thanks, Bob, for sticking around. I don't think that's hooked up. Do you want to just call him? Your phone or your phone? Takes too long to hook up. We're going to talk about Glenwood next. And we're going to get Jay Tallerman on the phone?
I can just call him on my phone.
Okay, you want to just call him on your phone?
I'm sorry, I was going to take five to 10 minutes.
Hey, guys. Yeah. Justin, I'm the one who's proposed, submitted a proposal for 20 Glenwood.
Okay.
Yep.
I think we're going to just discuss amongst ourselves.
Okay, all right. Beth mentioned I could be here for, in case you guys had a question.
Sure.
Can you hear me?
If we have anything, we'll be certainly
Sure.
here to ask. Thank you for coming.
Garbled. Is there a button on for me to call you up?
Is that the phone?
Okay.
It's okay now. It's ready.
He's going to call me back. It doesn't get reception inside, so I'm sorry. Hello? Hi, I'm going to put you on speaker.
Yeah, that was good. That was good, nice work.
Thank you. Can't do it again, I'm sure.
Jay, are you here?
I can hear you.
Great, thank you for joining us. So, we're going to start our discussion about 10...10, 20 Glenwood and the RFP responses we got. So, we got...Beth, I don't know if you want to
Sure.
paint the picture for the board?
So, yep, so we issued an RFP back in early August. It was due...responses were due September 1st. The town did receive one proposal from the abutter at 18 Glenwood Avenue. The proposer...the respondent offered two options. The first was a purchase price of $70,000, subject to the town demolishing the structure, extension of the sidewalk between 18 Glenwood and 20 Glenwood, and assistance from the town in adjusting the lot lines. And the second option was a purchase price of $40,000, and under that scenario, they would acquire the lot and demolish the structure themselves. So, I did have Town Council review the response, and I'll let Jay speak, but Town Council determined that...that only the second offer was a valid response, because the RFP stated that the purchaser would be responsible for demolition of the structure. Jay, I don't know if you have anything to add there?
No, that's about right. There's a single line, I think it's towards the first or second page of the RFP that said the town, the purchaser shall do all the demolition, and it was pretty unequivocal. We looked at it to see if there was any kind of ability to see it another way, but that was a limiting factor, so that we couldn't do. There are some anti-aid amendment issues with that. We probably could have worked around that a little bit, but that kept that one out of consideration. There were two other conditions that would be in both proposals, the sidewalk and assistance with the plan to connect the two properties. The sidewalk, if, to the extent the town is interested in doing that, and you could reject that particular condition if you want, that would be okay, because there's no prohibition of that in the RFP. The other condition, they don't even...we couldn't do that anyway, because they would have to apply to our board. Our board could obviously, I think the planning board could provide assistance, but under the law, they don't even have to, because as soon as they buy the little lot, demolish the house, the operation of merger will essentially kind of de facto create a single lot containing both lots. So, there's really nothing they have to do there from a legal perspective, and if they do want to do something, they can record a simple plan on their own with...or file it with the planning board and then record it, and that's what we want to do. And that's it.
So, Jay, if I under...this is Rich. If I understand you correctly, the option that we have for us is to accept the RFP for the $40,000 price?
Yep.
And we have the option of doing the sidewalk, including the sidewalk condition or not? Is that my sense?
Yeah, you can choose either way. Now, they could say it's the sidewalk or nothing, I suppose, but you have the right to reject that condition if you want, or to accept that condition.
Questions by board members? Comments?
You know, I guess, you know, I've got several. I'm not sure if this has been sent over to the Housing Partnership Board at all, no.
No, I just wanted to review with the select board first.
Yeah, I mean, we probably should get some stakeholder input, seeing as they're so involved in the process. I, you know, I'd have to take a look at the RFP to have it in front of me to see if it's responsive to, you know, what we were looking for. But it's hard for me to tell.
Yeah, so we did have...the way the RFP was set up is that we had two kind of options. One was for the...for it to be redeveloped for affordable housing, and the other was basically to sell it for the highest price.
Yeah.
And that, under the article that was previously approved by Town Meeting, whatever the proceeds from the sale is, will go into the Affordable Housing Trust.
Yeah. I mean, I know that there were, I think this is kind of a confluence of events here. There were several people who were interested in this, didn't...were never aware that it was put out for the RFP was issued, because they had gone through the planning office initially, and then when Brian wasn't here, there was nobody to reach back out to them and say, hey, you know, this is available, and if you want to bid on it, so, you know, I know that at least at one point, there was interest in housing at this location. You know, I'm not...I'm not sure if this is, you know, the kind of use that benefits the neighborhood or, you know, the town from a policy perspective. It's...I do think the land has value beyond, you know, just, you know, a small cash payment.
So, I think the goal here was to, you know, put this out, at least from my perspective, put this out and see what we got in return. You know, I thought there was one entity that may have been interested in it, you know, for housing purposes, but couldn't really put something together for it. You know, I think we've heard from the neighbors that this is, you know, for lack of a better word, you know, a kind of a blight on the neighborhood, so, you know, it went through the process, and at this point, you know, I think this has been kicking around for several years at this point. I think we've exhausted all remedies that we have, we could on this property. I would be inclined to accept the offer, get some money into our Affordable Housing Trust, and, you know, use it for other purposes and other areas that... Trust, and, you know, use it for other purposes and, and other areas that, you know, we might be able to incentivize some community partners to, to kinda develop affordable housing. We have some other lots that might be, you know, prime for some type of duplex construction or single-family construction. So any money that we can generate to, to go towards that, I think would be, would be helpful. But at this point, I think, you know, we spent a lot of time on this over the years. Mike certainly, you know, you, you've put a lot of effort into this and trying to make this lot work for housing. It just hasn't, hasn't panned out. So I think I would be inclined to accept the $40,000 offer. I'm indifferent on the sidewalks. I don't, I, you know, I, I guess I'd defer to the town's DPW to see, you know, how much of a burden that is to extend the sidewalks. But I'd be inclined to accept it, you know, $40,000 for, for title to the, to piece of property, straight up. That's just me at this point in time.
I agree. I don't know what to do about the condition of the sidewalk thing, but I do, I'm with Rich on accepting the $40,000 offer.
Yeah, I think at this point, that makes the most sense. It seems like what, from what we've heard, given the size and the shape of the slot and the lack of parking, that it seems to be increasingly unlikely that it would be available for housing. I don't know how this bid went out, but I assume it was through, you know, some process that is going out into lists and, and reaching a number of folks who are looking for similar projects who chose not to, to bid on it. So whether, you know, if there are organizations who, you know, were specifically interested in that, I would expect that they're also looking at that across other municipalities and seeing what RFPs are, are coming available.
So I think on the sidewalks, I would accept the offer with that not being conditioned, but tell the purchaser that we would consult with DPW and see how feasible that is, and if we can make it happen, you know, we can do it. But I, I don't think, I feel comfortable promising that without consulting with, you know, DPW and seeing if it's even feasible. I don't know what the grades are over there or anything like that, so.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's unfortunate, it's a real missed opportunity, you know, for the town. You know, I think, obviously, it needs to be cleaned up. You know, there is an existing residence there that, while dilapidated, served the town for many years. So there was someone living there for a long time. So the idea that someone couldn't live there, you know, doesn't really seem to hold any weight that was tied up for many years in a tax-taking with someone that had, the property had gone to descendants of the owner, and they were in Texas, and so it was a kind of a long, convoluted affair. But certainly it needs to be demolished. You know, anytime that we have an opportunity to provide some sort of affordable housing somewhere, then I think, you know, we should, we should be working hard to do it. I, I don't think that this payment moves affordable housing forward in the town in any way substantially. There's very little that we can do with that amount of money. You certainly couldn't buy land for it. So, you know, I'm concerned here that this went out during probably the sleepiest time possible, or window of time where most people are not paying attention, and there probably aren't a lot of people looking for a lot this size that are checking the, you know, RFPs that are put out through the state. So it's just, it's unfortunate. I think we should clean it up. I think it wouldn't take much to demo, but, you know, it's unfortunate for us to miss an opportunity to have, have housing in an area that would be ideal for us, and certainly in, in high demand, and certainly for affordable housing purposes. But, you know, I, I don't know, we started this process with the Housing Partnership Board, and I'm, I'm surprised that we didn't invite them to contribute to conversation about this, so.
They were at the walkthrough. And we all voted in June that this was when we would put it out, that we would put it out in, and I think we determined to push it a little bit later into July for, for timing, not to do it right away. So if we didn't get the response we desired in terms of affordable housing, I think we also went into it knowing that it was a risk that we wouldn't get that response because there had not been a lot of recent interest in, in putting it there. I think, yeah, if, if we had a proposal with affordable housing to put a unit there, or two units there, I think that's, that's very appealing. But it is challenging for, in terms of like rising interest rates and things like that, for, for builders to be bidding on that at this point in time. And I, so, you know, it's potentially that it's gonna, if we don't accept this bid, then it's going to continue to sit there as a nuisance to that neighborhood because it's, you know, can only be maintained to a certain point in that building without being demolished by the town. And, you know, we're just waiting on something to come down the line, or, you know, the right deal to come along. So it, it is just challenging to, I know it's kind of, that's where we want it to be, but we've also discussed as a board for several months that, you know, that's a potential outcome of putting this RFP out, is that it was not affordable housing, and that's in how we design the selection criteria. It's not to restrict someone from purchasing it for another purpose.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree. I mean, I think the towns, and Mike specifically, you have put in tremendous amount of effort to, you know, with the Housing Partnership Board to try to make this work. It just hasn't panned out. I think we need to move on and focus on some other areas of town, maybe Northwater Road or somewhere like that, where we have a viable, you know, lot that we can really put some units on. So I'd love to, you know, any resources that we can gather, and I, I agree, it's not, you know, a ton of money, but it's, it's something that we can, you know, put towards, you know, another development. So that's kinda where I land. But if there's no other discussion, if there's a motion, we can entertain it. If not, then we can move on.
So would a motion be to accept the RF, the response to RFP with the $40,000 option?
Jay, are you on the phone still?
I am.
Maybe, I mean, just from a legal standpoint, if, if we were to go for a forty, the $40,000 option with no conditions, do you have suggestive language?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it could be as simple as I, I move to accept a proposal with the exception of, or the second proposal with the exception of the second condition, provided that, you know, we, we will advise them that we will make best efforts. I don't know if you have to even address the third condition because it's unnecessary. I could explain that in correspondence with them because we're gonna have to draft an agreement. But we're, we're obviously, there's nothing we can do to assist them with that anywhere except to give them access to the planning board. But that, the, the primary motion is, is fine just to accept the second proposal with the exception of the second condition.
Okay. Hope that helps anybody.
So I move that we accept the proposal to the 20 Glenwood RFP, if the, with the second proposal of $40,000, with the exception of the second condition around sidewalks.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll do a roll call vote. Michelle?
Yes.
Mike?
No.
Anthea?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right. Thank you. Thanks, Jay. I think we're good for you for tonight.
Excellent. So we'll work on a, on a draft and figure out a way, we'll, we'll discuss with Beth how to advise them, and then we'll start moving it to a draft agreement. We'll get it moving.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
All right. Take care. Have a good night.
Night.
You too. All right, moving on to the fall town meeting article, warrant articles. I hope everyone, I think there was a draft that came out today. Did you wanna run through these, Beth?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think I'll just walk through each one. So there, you should have a copy at table of the ones that went out earlier today. So the first one, these aren't numbered because we'll number them when we put them in the, in the warrant, but the first one at the top here is a standard article to hear the reports of boards and committees. No questions on that one. The second one on the first page, this is the larger paragraph here, is related to the borrowing authorization for the Morocco School covert. So if you remember, early this summer, we had to submit paperwork to DOR to increase that authorization. The original project cost was estimated at 9.11 million. The revised estimate is 10.2 million. So we got that approval from DOR. This article was drafted by bond counsel. We are paying for that increase through two sources. First is on expended bond proceeds from prior bothering authorizations of just over 465,000. And then we'll be increasing the borrowing authorization in total from the 9.11 million to 9.73 and change. So any questions on that? This article is proposed to be cosponsored between Capital Planning and Select Board.
Any questions on that article? I mean, it makes sense, given where we find ourselves when we bid the project, or when we borrowed.
Yep.
Okay. The bottom, last article on the bottom on page one, this is an article, Capital has funded improvements to the Leonard Field Playground and the McDonald Field Playground. So for Leonard Field, they've approved up to $450,000, 200,000 of which is coming from the Eversource payment that we got earlier this summer from the license agreement. That came in as miscellaneous non-recurring revenue, which is referenced in the, in the article, and then $486,000 for McDonald Field. And again, that article will be cosponsored between Capital and the Select Board. Any questions on that one?
Anyone? Nope, seems consistent with what we talked about.
Yep.
Uh, the next article at the top of page two, this article is to author, give authorization to the board to purchase what we lovingly refer to as the orphan parcel in the Waterfield Lot. It's a just over 1,700 square foot parcel that is owned by the MBTA, and we have been working with the T for the past five to 10 years to figure out how to transfer that property to the town. And we finally got to the finish line, or close to the finish line. So this article will give the board the authorization to purchase that property and to allocate funds to, to make that purchase.
Any questions on that one? Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
All right. The next article was a possible article we were considering with respect to 164 St. I believe the consensus is that we're gonna remove that article from consideration. So I will delete that.
Okay.
The next article is, the town owns a piece of the, what's called the Woburn Loop, was formerly a railroad right of way that went through, through town behind, in the, what is part of the parking lot for 955 Main Street. This article would give the, the board the authority to lease that property. Currently, we've been, the tenant, or the owner of 955 St., Main Street has been able to use that through a license agreement, but we can't continue the extension of that agreement in perpetuity. So this, should the, the owner choose to enter a lease with the town, this would give the board the authority to execute that lease.
Any questions on that? Is everyone okay with that?
The next one is something that Mike and I have been working on. So in the license agreement that was approved earlier this year by the board for Eversource's continued use of Washington Street Park, we did, we were provided a, a fee of $50,000 to continue to use that, that park. And so we are recommending that we allocate that $50,000 to make improvements at both Davidson Park and Washington Street Park. And so this article would basically pull that money out of miscellaneous, non-recurring revenue and put it in an account that we could draw on in the future to make improvements as needed.
Any thoughts or questions on that one?
To clarify, the improvements specifically at Davidson Park that we talked about earlier, and that Concom is, is discussing later this week, those will be done by?
Those will be done by Eversource, right. So this is more, if we wanna buy some new benches, some picnic tables. I think there's a lot of thoughts about what we might do at Washington Street Park, so we haven't really kinda worked through those details. But before this money gets lost to free cash, I think it makes sense to kinda pull it out, so we have it there to use.
Do we, are there other anticipated needs? I know it's, it's the fall warrant, but is there anything else that we think relative to improvements of this property or anything else that we wanna put in? So not just Davidson, Washington, is there any sort of like future placeholder that we anticipate needing improvements when this work is done?
I think the feedback we've gotten from the neighborhood is they'd like to see more improvements in those two specific areas.
I'm just, okay. I mean, it's not that you would have an article for just like a, a stretch of sidewalk from here to here, right on Cross Street. Just didn't know if there's any other sort of adjacent parcel that we own or control that we wanna add to this.
So we have $200,000 that we got through the original MOU that was negotiated in 2019 that can be used for traffic improvements along Cross Street. So we have that money available to us as well.
Thank you.
Any questions on that?
Not anymore.
All right. Makes sense.
All right. So the next article is to hear, for the town meeting, to hear the report of the Community Preservation Act Study Committee that was recently created. They're not included in Article One, so we have to add a separate article for them.
And do we know when they will, so we'll hear that report sort of somewhere in the course of the meeting? We can't take this up. Could we consent agenda and move it? I mean, I know it was just like frustrating, but do we need to, could we move up when we hear this report in the flow of the meeting?
Yeah, so that's something we, we don't just decide tonight, but
Right.
When we, when town manager's office lays out the numbering of the warrant, we can either put this right at the beginning with all the other reports, or if the committee thinks you might need more time, we can put it at the very end to give you a little bit more time, but.
The committee needs more time.
Committee would like to spice things up in the middle of some votes.
Unless Anthea agrees otherwise, I don't know.
I think also it can be a bit onerous to come to the first night of town meeting and just have people talk out at you on reports. So
Right.
Let's put it later for
Yeah, so we can move it. We can, we can move it towards the end if we think that is.
And I, and I think, you know, what we'll hopefully be able to do is submit the report, you know, in advance to town meeting members, and then present kind of where we're going, what the timeline is. And so they'll, they'll have it in hand. People, you know, can have a conversation about it.
Right.
Maybe a bookending, a capital presentation might be a good place to put it.
Yeah.
Just thinking.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. The next article is the one that I mentioned in my opening remark. So we opened the bids for the Arbo Wendell Street Pump Station. We do, and I gave, I handed out a kind of little financial summary here. So the, we had an original appropriation of 1.35 million. We've used some of that for design services. We have a remaining balance of 1.23 million. The low bidder came in at 1.19 million. We have engineering services and a contingency that we need to fund. So we need So we need approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more to feel comfortable. So, this article written by bond counsel increases the borrowing authorization from the one point three five to one point six million. And this is funded through Water and Soil Enterprise Fund, a debt service.
Questions on that?
Alright. So then the next two articles, at the top of page three. So these are kind of taken together. These are for the Lynch Solar. So the first one would be for the town to appropriate money to pay for the acquisition and installation of the solar panels, should we select the direct purchase option. And the second one would be for the town to enter into a power purchase agreement. We had a very informative meeting last week with Michelle and, and Mike were on it, as well as several members from the school committee and school department and EFPPC, and town council Lisa Mead did an excellent presentation, so. Things have changed a little bit since the last time we entered into, should we go the PPA route, things have changed a little bit in terms of what the requirements for pilot agreements. The only authorization that we need from town meeting at this point is to enter, authority to enter into an agreement for longer than three years. So they are not approving the terms of the PPA, they are just approving an agreement that goes beyond a three-year contract. So that's what the second article is. And then the conversation we had last week, the chair of the school committee indicated there might be an interest in the school committee cosponsoring both of these articles. So those are, we forwarded both of these articles to the school committee as well for their consideration. Any questions on those? The next article is, it's becoming the standard article for opioid funds. We've received, received some additional funding to be transferred.
Great.
The next article is a standard one we have to rescind borrowing authorizations. Article after that is related to, so you heard from comptroller Stacy Ward this evening that we had about one point two million dollars in turnbacks from our FY twenty-two health insurance budget. So this article would allow us to transfer some or all of that money into the health insurance stabilization fund that was created. Was it spring town meeting? Spring town meeting. We don't have to decide, maybe it was fall. Anyway, in the past.
Yeah.
I think we created it in the fall.
Created it in the fall?
Yeah. Anyway, I think we funded some of it in the.
Okay, I don't know if it does matter.
Maybe not, I don't remember.
So we don't have to decide tonight how much of that one point two million we want to put in, just, we'll, we'll work on that as part of the motion, just that we will do it.
Any questions on that? Alright.
Okay. The next one is a standard article we've had. This is, allows us to front the money for the field engineering services that we have out, helping to oversee the Eversource work on the town's behalf, and then we get reimbursed for Eversource for that. And then the last one is the standard article to dissolve, except committee reports dissolve old committees, authorize new committees.
Great. Thank you Beth. Any questions or discussion on the warrant?
It's gonna be a long meeting.
Long meeting.
It's a lot of just hours.
Right?
Yep. That is what it is.
Alright, so we need to vote our articles tonight because the warrant will close before our next meeting, so once there's further discussion, we can entertain a motion.
Move that we approve the warrant articles for fall town meeting as revise that table on September eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Can we say in substantial, leave a form in case there's like a comma or semicolon that needs to be?
Yes. Tweaked. Move that we approve the warrant articles for fall town meeting in substantially their form as presented at table on September eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
All those in favor? Aye. Great, thank you. Alright, moving on, the Washington Swan Street Project Due Diligence Extension, I believe the due diligence agreement is ending permanently before our next meeting. They're still doing some due diligence out there, and they're looking for an extension to October seventeenth, Beth?
Yep.
Sounds good, let's do it.
Alright, any questions? Nope. Motion?
Yes. This one you guys have to sign.
We do.
We'll sign it.
Not me.
Okay.
So it'll be both, it will be two motions.
So it's the land disposition and, okay, move that we approve the extend, the fourth amendment to the land disposi- disposition agreement, extending to October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. And move that we approve the amendment to the, document, right of entry and license agreement extended to October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
Same.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Couple of standing items on here, the CPA working group.
Yeah, so a quick update, so we have the study committee forum established. Our first meeting, looks like it'll be a week from tonight, looking at the doodle poll. Not sure what time yet, but we'll send out an email in the morning confirming that, and we'll get things moving. One thing that we will probably need, and something for the board to consider, is maybe some support, some technical support around putting together the, the look and feel of the document, you know, itself. I, it's, when we're kind of using the Natick CPA Study Committee Report as our model, and it's, you know, it's very professional looking, it's very together, and I think it, it helps, it's, it, information's very accessible as well for something that has a lot of content. And so our group will provide the content and the strategy around it, but I don't know who that person is that's going to be putting to, you know, putting it together into a, you know, a form that has, you know.
Do you need s- staff assistance, or are you talking about outside assistance?
Probably outside assistance, I would say, because of the short timeline, and especially going into town meeting is when we're going to need it, so.
So you're looking for funds?
Yeah, probably funds, it probably, I know Jennifer Goldson and her team has done a lot of that stuff for us in the past, and I don't know if that's.
I don't want to speak for her, I can certainly reach out, she just seems very busy.
Yeah.
My only concern.
Maybe we can contact Natick and see who they used.
Yes, I am actually meeting with the, the chair of that committee as well, so I'm.
Do you have a, sorry, do you have an account that you want those funds to come through, or are you going to come back with a proposal or what?
Just, just, just give me cash and then I'll.
In a blue gym bag, leave it outside the porch, got it.
May open the bottom drawer here.
No, I, I don't know, I mean, it could be, I, I would assume it, I don't even really know what that would cost or what I'm really asking for necessarily, but, but if we look at the kind of final work product of, of what they had, it's, it's professional, it's, and I think it, it, it helps because this is really going to be the document that we carry through for the campaign, which is a year-long, you know, campaign for us. So we, we want to get it right, we want it to look good, and we want people to feel like the material is accessible, so they understand what we're, we're asking for and why. So I, I would assume it would be, you know, a couple thousand dollars for that, and maybe we can talk to the town planner and see if, you know, he has suggestions about who we can reach out to for that. You know, MAPC has done a lot of work with us in the past on things like that, but because, you know, maybe our question isn't so much content, you know, as it is kind of design, maybe there's someone else, I don't know.
I mean, we could help from the town manager's budget to support that as well.
Okay. As long as everybody's cool with that, I mean.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, I am, I mean, just so you know what you need.
So next, Monday evening will be the study committee, and actually I'll take a look at the doodle poll, we're sitting here, let you know probably when.
We'll meet virtually, so we'll just coordinate, because we'll get that meeting posted and then coordinate a Zoom.
Yeah.
So just send me, you know, whatever your short agenda, short tweet by Thursday morning. I guess you need to be at seven on Monday night, so. And do you need a Zoom link, or are you guys going to use?
We need, we need a Zoom link.
Yeah, if there's one kicking around, I guess we can use one, I mean, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I don't know, it's late, I don't know, yes, sure.
So what I'll do is I'll, I'll send you the, what I'll do is I'll set it up tomorrow, and I'll send you the information with the password to log in.
Okay.
And then you can develop the agenda.
Thanks Patty. Alright, anything else on CPA, we good? Sounds like progress. Thank you guys both for your hard work on that. Lynch Solar, any update Beth on that?
Not too much to update at this point. The ninety percent plans were provided to Select and Zapotec the week before last. Zapotec got us their updated numbers on Friday, Select needs a few more days to put their numbers together. We also, the town manager's office, upon the recommendation of Lisa Mead, reached out to another consultant, Beth Greenblatt from Beacon Integrated Solutions. She works quite a bit with Lisa and all the PPAs that Lisa does and other solar projects. And so we've brought her on board just to help the town manager's office to kind of review these proposals. And the goal is to have some updated financial numbers for you on the twenty-sixth, provided we get what we need from Select.
True.
And it seems like payback years are shrinking slightly with some of the updated designs, it looks like.
Yeah.
So, you know, a direct purchase or PPA, but that the, the horizon to realize the revenue has shrunk by maybe a couple of years. But we'll see when we get the updated stuff from Select. We just got some updated numbers over the weekend.
Yeah, it was really hard to.
Make sense.
Yeah, I didn't, you said that, but I, yeah, for, yeah, and so I, hopefully that, with some of the old information in there and some of the new and some of the, I couldn't really get a sense of what.
I just threw a dart at it, and I think it looks like it's going in a good direction, so there's that. But it'll be good to have side-by-side comparisons. We had two different costing models on ninety percent, you know, with different drawing assumptions. It'd be good to have them side-by-side. We'll have more info.
Do we have a sense of when Select is going to provide their?
So we did have a meeting scheduled for today, but they weren't able to get the information to us in time, so I'm hopeful we'll have some in the next few days. Because there's a lot to go through, you know, in the next couple of weeks between the two.
Yep.
Yeah, I think if we could have just the information in a way that's, you know, removing the, the previous information in there and data with just whatever their two current ninety percent numbers are.
Yeah, I agree.
Alright. We look forward to more information on that.
Yes, we will.
You guys.
That's all we can do.
Guys mining the documents for us, we appreciate it. Housing production plan update?
Yeah, so we are moving forward, hope to have the contract signed with MAPC this week for the housing production plan update. And they've requested that we establish an advisory committee to help, to assist with the project. So I'm, I'll kind of read what they, in quotes, what they said, that they recommend that we include a, a group that includes homeowners, renters, seniors, low-income individuals, people of varying racial background, racial backgrounds, residents of the housing authority, single parents, planning board, and select board members. So I put together what I thought was a kind of draft list of people we might want to include. I looked at the group that was kind of used for the original plan. So my thought was we have two select board members, two planning board members, housing partnership board, I don't know if, maybe one or two members, depending on what that group decides, affordable housing trust, council on aging, disability access committee, the housing authority executive director, and then staff, obviously myself, the town planner, and I think including the council on aging director would be helpful. The question I think is, is how many residents at large we want to include and how we want to kind of solicit.
Is it like thirteen people right now before we get to residents?
It's a lot of people. And when I sent this list to MAPC, they were like, didn't think that two members, two residents at large was enough, so.
They thought we should have more people.
So.
I don't know what your experience was in the first one. It seemed like there was maybe three or four people when I looked at the, kind of the cover page that showed the list of people.
Yeah, I mean, I think that some of the kind of non-stakeholders or representing committees, just residents that wanted to be involved, you know, weren't so active in the process and, and, you know, just kind of disappeared along the way, and then, so, but, you know, I, I, I don't know if there's someone from the schools on there as well. I thought we had someone there last time, or maybe.
I don't think there was last time, but I'm happy to include somebody from the school committee.
You know, it might make sense. I mean, there's a lot of questions when we look at, when, when we roll this out to residents about the, the impact of affordable housing on schools, right? That was the big question, if we're, you know, doing all these big, what's the impact there? So it's, it was helpful to have them there as well, but I, I don't know, certainly you can put it out to, to, to residents. Maybe, you know, some student as well, seems like would make sense.
Do you think we need that big of a committee for an update to the housing production plan, or do you think a smaller group? And maybe not, I'm not saying take it from the residents, but more of, you know, do we need two people from each of those committees, or would one be now? I'm just thinking out loud.
I think, I think that's probably true. Yeah, that's, that's probably helpful. I think we probably need to.
Who would share this, Beth?
So. I, I don't, I don't know how you did it the last time, I think it was like.
Oh, I know, and I did it last time, yeah, yeah, so there's two of us, so I think, that's why I was saying that, I think it's helpful to have two, you know, two select board members and then, you know, maybe, and I'm forgetting now that it says that it's really an update, but we're not, not really creating it from whole cloth like we did last time, but it's still going to be, you know, some, some effort, so.
Yeah, it is. I know, I agree, I just, if we're creating from scratch, I can understand, you know, having all those people in the room, but maybe since, you know, we have to have a model to work off of and, and for updating it, I just don't know, I just want it to be productive, so that's just my take. And I'll volunteer John to, to lead the.
That'd be good. Yeah, I mean, what else say, if, for, it was helpful to have, you know, Mariano and I, because we work pretty closely with MAPC kind of in the background and kind of putting things forward, and part of it is the public outreach, really, that, that was the, the biggest effort. And, and so it's hearing feedback from people and, you know, getting some, some information gathered as well. But I, I don't know, I mean, if we can shave off some, some of those, you know.
Yeah, I'll see if the planning board just wants to have one member.
Yeah.
I thought we talked at one point about who the second select board member was, but then I, I know, I think you were certainly one of them.
Yep.
Was it John that we?
It is now.
He's not here, that's what he gets.
No, is it from the, when we looked at the assignments?
I don't think so. I think it was more, was it?
I think it was.
Maybe Patty.
We can find it for you, Beth.
I, I'm going to put John on the bus. You guys did ask him, and I think he did offer to be a part of it.
Who, John?
Yeah.
Seriously.
I seriously.
We were kidding, but now I like that answer.
I think he might have.
Yeah, I think he might have.
That could be true.
So I know, it was John and Anthea.
Now it's just true.
Communications. And I couldn't remember who it was for the, for this.
It is now.
Well, we can figure that out and get you.
He said sure, why not, you know, it's.
The right person.
So I'm going to send an email out. These groups are getting a lot of emails from us lately and.
I know, that's what my concern was.
Participate, it's, yeah, yeah.
About asking, because it's already, the, the planning board, they're, they're waiting a little bit on the CPA committee too, because I think it's just bandwidth at this time of year.
Everybody's got a lot going on.
Going into town meeting as well.
One here, one here, one here.
What, what did we say that we were going to have this done by?
So the plan expires in February, but, but MAPC can't, just, they have a lot going on as well, and so the scheduling wise.
Yeah, so can we say like spring?
I think we're, it'll probably be pushed till early summer by the time we get.
Oh, summer, oh, okay.
Late spring, early summer to get something finalized.
Okay.
But I think we want to, part of it is that they want to dovetail this with the three A, MBTA three A issues, because there's a lot of overlap between what, what's happening there, and so there's a lot of ability to kind of. And so there's a lot of ability to kind of, you know, co-mingle some of these conversations, I think, between what the planning board's going to have coming up on the rezoning efforts related to that and what we might want to hear.
Sounds good.
It was Mike and John.
There we go.
May 15th, God.
I swear.
There you go, thank you.
Well done.
Anthea's spoken.
There's no way John remembers that.
May 15th, which means page six.
It's an Anthea's book.
Yeah, that's true.
I did.
It was also the same day we did committee assignments, so.
Yes.
We'll proceed.
I would believe anything that's an Anthea's note. She could tell me anything and I would be sure it's in there.
Kind of true.
All right, moving on, Lynch School specifications vote. So this is related, it's on a memorandum in your packet that's related to the project. But these are the specifications that they want to put forth for the Lynch bid.
I think town council gave us a form of the vote to use.
Yep. Any questions or discussion on this? We all go with this?
Move that the board approve the six specific items listed in the memo presented to the select board from Margaret White, Special Projects Manager, dated September 6th, 2023.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up is town manager goals and evaluation process. So in Beth's contract, it says we're supposed to have her goals done by the end of July, but we were working on our own goals. And I know we have a goal session coming up on the 26th. So I didn't know if we could spend maybe a few minutes during that process to kind of, you know, dovetail on what we've been working on and maybe put some goals together for Beth. And Beth, I don't know if you want to have any input in looking at that as well?
Yeah.
Maybe supply something? If that's okay for everybody, I just want to put that on the radar. Evaluations, I don't think is now based on the contract, so that's kind of where we're at. With that, just want to make sure those are taken care of. So if we can plan for the 26th to, to do some of that, Michelle? Yeah, that'd be great.
We're meeting at, the plan was to meet at 6:00 PM on the 26th. Is that still our plan?
Still the plan.
Yes.
Well, it was the 25th, now it's the 26th.
It was, it's now the 26th, yep.
I think-
We're going to get that thing cleaned up from last time.
Okay.
Anthea's going to make it pretty, that's what I remember.
But what time are we meeting on the 26th?
The 6th.
The 6th.
The 6 o'clock?
Yeah.
All right. I think that just leaves the consent agenda and we have a- A consent agenda. We have lots of consent agenda. Lots going on in the town.
Patty, did you add the request from the-
The supplemental.
We have supplemental, one too.
The ideas, the supplemental post on the board.
Any questions about the consent agenda?
No.
You can go the blessing of the animals on my birthday?
That's your birthday?
Maybe I'll get blessed.
Patty, I did not see the June 26th minutes in the packet.
Yeah, I was saying June 26th, but I put June 26th.
So it's, it's 26th in the agenda, but the minutes, I just see June 26th.
I saw the 5th. So why don't we just approve those?
I thought, okay, yeah, because I just didn't attach the 26th to it. I had multiple PDFs open. So just June 5th.
Okay. So do we just, is that the consent agenda as amended or do we take that one?
Consent agenda as amended.
Maybe the first time we've done that one. Move that we approve the consent agenda as amended for Monday, September 11th, 2023.
Same.